Check, check, check. Check, 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 check.
Hey, everyone. We'll get started in just a minute or so.
You could join ours, or fun at 7:00 AM.
We wake everyone up for the day.
I bet you do.
Your Thursdays will be fantastic if you join our.
So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the first of the Chamber's political forums that are held each September. But first, if you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming, and a big shout out to our friends at KPU TV and our radio friends at KTKN for live streaming this, so it is available to more and more people. As we all know, an informed voter is a smart voter. So, this is how it will work today. Today's forum will be very conversational in nature. And we have three of our candidates here, one of whom, one of the candidates, Tom Hewitt, is traveling for work. I have a written opening statement from him. We'll start with opening statements, and those will be two minutes each. And we'll just go right down the line. I'll hand you the microphone. And then we'll have several other questions that will be a minute and a half response each. We also have a couple of quick-hit questions, and those will not be timed, but as I explained to the candidates prior to the forum, they are designed to be very, very quick answers. So, rather than tax our wonderful timer over there, Kristy Willis, then, with that being said, just make that one quick. So halfway through your time, Kristy will raise the yellow card. When it's time for you to be done, she will raise the red card. Today, we have with us Rob Arnold, Melissa O'Brien, and Ginger McCormick. Tom Hewitt, as I mentioned previously, was not able to attend today due to work travel. These candidates are running for a three-year seat, two of which are available on the Ketchikan Gateway Board of Education. And thank you very much for your willingness to serve. And so, what we'd like to start out with, if I can get the microphone out of here, there we go. What we'd like to know is, first off, tell us your name, so, because the people on the radio cannot see you. And then, one particular item about yourself that others are more likely not aware of that lends to your ability to successfully serve on the Board of Education. We'll start with you, Melissa.
No pressure. Hi, my name's Melissa O'Brien. Do you want me to give an introduction, or just the, okay. So, mother of four here in the district, longtime Ketchikan resident, went to school here. I think one thing that I would like to say is I'm actually a Revilla graduate, which surprises people. It's our alternative school, and it makes me very proud to be a Revilla graduate.
My name is Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick. I'm Klinkan-Haida. I'm Klinkan-D. My grandfather's people are from Sonya-Kwan, and I just take a moment to thank the people of Tontu-Kwan and Sonya-Kwan for allowing us to be here today. And one thing about me is that I started as a high school dropout who went to go get my GED. And shortly after, I enrolled in for my associate's degree at a community college and graduated with my associate's degree and my high school diploma, and later went on to Portland State University.
Hi, my name's Rob Arnold. I want to thank the members of the Chamber for inviting me and public and different media outlets. One thing about me is, I can say also, I dropped out of high school for half a year, and I was led back and got my high school diploma and went on to college, junior college in northern Idaho. I was a logger back in the 90s, so I loved my logging experience in the camps. And I want to give back. I think kids are our future, and if we don't help them now, I think that they're going to be at a disadvantage with what they've missed the last couple of years.
And I will take this opportunity to read the statement from Mr. Hewitt. "Good afternoon, Ketchikan. I'm unable to attend in person today, so I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity. We all know curiosity is what really motivates a child to learn. Most importantly, our schools will never be at their best unless we work together as a community and as adults strive to learn and work together the way we ask our kids to do. I've been in Alaska about 20 years. One thing I've learned early on is the best thing about this place isn't necessarily the natural beauty, but the people. All of us have a story about how helpful and caring our neighbors are, and pretty soon you find yourself wanting to give back. So in 2019 and 2020, I stepped up to fill vacancies on the Ketchikan School Board, and that time gave me a close-up look at the challenges children, parents, and teachers face. Our school district will face numerous issues this year, but most notably addressing shortfalls in student achievement and graduation rate, funding challenges, and recruitment and retention of professionals and staff. We can only address these problems if we all adopt a positive approach to building a high-functioning school district. We need to focus on building a culture of trust where all voices are heard without the fear of retaliation. We need to create a just, equitable, and inclusive culture in our schools emphasizing accountability with a measure of understanding where problems are addressed promptly rather than focusing on assigning blame. I believe first that good government is open, transparent, and accountable. The school board needs to be responsive to parents and the community as a whole. Good leadership is driven by data, character, humility, ethics, and the ability to make hard choices for the long-term benefit of society quickly and decisively. Thanks again, and please encourage your friends and neighbors to vote October 4th." I kept looking at Kristy to see if I was going to get the red card on that one. All right, so in that same vein, I'll still give you two minutes, since you were very short on this last round. And this is great, because we're just having a conversation. It's the community's way to get to know you. So this is kind of a follow-up, and we'll start with you. What is the single most important issue facing the Ketchikan School District, and how would you address it if you were elected?
Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick. I think one of the biggest things is retention. So if we have, I think the school board and the school district has been working really hard. The education system seems to grow and develop to fit all styles of learning needs. But if we can have better routes and different places to go besides just an alternative school where they work at their own pace, and some seem to drop out for our, with the inability to stay at that pace and are unable to graduate with their peers. So I think if we can strategically plan as a group, as a school board, better ways that our kids can stay in school. And one of those would be to our educators to help build a better foundation for them to provide their students with their best, and whether that's expanding science labs so they can have better materials to better fit different learning styles.
I need to think about that, too.
Hi, my name's Rob Arnold. One of the issues I think that's very important is, I saw a study. The average nine-year-old has lost about five points on their reading and seven points in their math. So I think within the last couple of years, we've, we've lost track in our learning system. And I think that we need to get back to basics, to traditional education, and focus on the ABCs, which are math, reading, and writing. Our kids are falling behind. They're not going to be competitive when they get out into the world, either through college, or if they want to graduate and go right into the job field. We need to support our kids. We also need to retain and recruit good teachers to teach these basics to the kids. Also, we need to look at how, why are these kids dropping out? Our graduation rates are going really low. I graduated from high school, so a question would, that I would ask is, why are kids not graduating? Are the classes boring? I think we need more VOTEC. We need industrial arts back in the schools. And I think that if we focus on these things, that the kids' test scores will go up.
Thank you. Melissa O'Brien, I love that we all kind of have a different answer for that, because I think it's all important. But I think for me, I'm a parent of four, like I mentioned. I had two that graduated during the pandemic. So one in 2020, one in 2021. I have one in the special education system, and I have one that's in first grade. And I think that coming out of COVID, looking at what our kids have gone through, looking at what our community's gone through, we need to figure out how to support our kids' education and mental well-being, and that's something that's really important to me. When we talk about no child left behind, that means all of our kids, our kids that are on IEPs, our kids that are struggling and maybe not graduating. So I think for me, that's the most important, is just figuring out how we can support our kids' education and mental well-being during this time coming out of a pandemic.
And we will start this time down with Mr. Arnold, and we'll still allow the two minutes. Everyone seems to be very judicious with their use of time so far. Okay, so what are your ideas for addressing shortfalls in professional retention and recruitment?
Shortfalls, that's someone, that's something no one likes to talk about. Where do we cut? I think what we need to look at is the budget as a whole, and go line by line. If I've heard that 80% is, you know, salaries and benefits, and 20% is left for supplies and classes and things, then where are we going to cut? Usually, what they cut is like VOTEC programs and different things that kids may want, or they cut positions, or we have a support staff problem. They can't hire enough people to support the teachers. So where do we cut? That's, that's a question that the community doesn't like to talk about. Like I said, we need to invest more in our kids. We need to invest in education as far as the basics, the reading and writing and math. If we don't, if we don't have good reading skills and comprehension skills, or writing skills, you go out into the world and you're going to be at a disadvantage. I've heard that a lot of kids that come out of school have to take remedial classes just to get into the system as far as the college or a job. So my thing is, let's not cut kids and their classes and, you know, the basic programs. Let's, let's look at other things, and I think that we would have to do that by going through the budget line by line and have more transparency and fiscal accountability.
And again, the question is, what are your ideas for addressing shortfalls in professional retention and recruitment?
Hi, Melissa O'Brien. You know, I think we have a pretty amazing staff in our district. I think we need to continue to be competitive with our pay. We can't always look at necessarily cutting staff pay or those kind of things to solve problems, but we're going to have to look at those kind of things when we're looking at our budget in the coming years. When COVID money stops flowing, that's what we're looking at, is where do we make the cuts? It's either staff, or programs, or something. So I think prioritizing, being creative, figuring out ways that we can really work with staff and existing staff, supporting the ones we have, whether that's change in step, if it's, so I think there are ways to do it. But I think it's engaging our current staff as well in those ways.
Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick. I would have to say that as a collective board, to just sit there and really narrow in on grants management and pairing up with different entities within the communities. I know some places in the state of Alaska in the Lower 48 do a Running Start program, which I believe our high school students have the education for, that they have the ability to graduate with their associate's degree the same time as their high school diploma. And by pairing up with a college, that would mean a population of our students went over there as well. And we would have to see what kind of income that would bring into the high schools as well to prepare our kids for that type of programs. For cutting staff is not what I'd go to, because if you pay, if you see that there's a lot of staff shortages, and then the staff members are overwhelmed by their 30 to 1, it doesn't make a good ratio, or we're leaving a lot of students left out to be able to fall through the cracks if we have not enough people there to tend to them or fit their style of teaching needs. Not one teacher fits every student. So I think we'd probably do things like look, oversee the budget, and see what we can do to bring in more different styles of grants and more funding to our school district instead of going straight for cuts.
Okay, so this one will be a minute thirty. And the question is, what attributes and behaviors are essential for school board members?
A minute thirty. This is Melissa O'Brien again. Fairness, compassion, ability to learn and listen. I think it's important that, that any public official realizes that they don't know everything, and that they have a lot to learn, that they have a lot to listen to. So I do feel like it's a responsibility of somebody running to, and in that office, to make sure that they understand the issues in the community, to make sure they understand the issues at play. I think really just kind of being humble. I think those are all kind of important, and a minute and thirty is not going to happen.
Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick, I think to be, have the ability to know that you're not there for yourself, that you are there for the students, and to know that you're advocating for them. And that's really important, to not only understand, but to build a relationship with them and their families, and know where the faults and the strengths lie. To be able to be a good team worker, because you're not, one person is not the school board. The whole entire school board together is the ones that are going to build up strategies and solutions. And to be able to do outreach within the community, to work with other city officials and government officials and state, I think would be really important.
Hi, this is Rob Arnold again. I think the most important thing in my case would be the experience that I offer. I've been on several different boards. I was appointed by Governor Walker to be on the Marine Transportation Advisory Board. I was also on my local union. I ran for, to have a chair on their E-board, and I was the vice chairman. I was also involved in negotiation with our contracts with the state of Alaska, so I have experience in that regard. I've also been on KRBD. I was on the board for a short time. It was very informative, because she took us through classes on how to be a board member. I think that's important to know. I was also in Juno. I was on the Juno Pregnancy Resource Center board. So I feel like I have varied experiences, and I think that building consensus with other members and your life experiences helps. You can relate to people. I've had all this experience, so I feel that I can relate to the whole board and to the parents listening, gathering information. I can gather information. I know where to go in the state, so that would be what I would say.
All right, keeping it at a minute thirty. We'll start with you, Ginger. We'll dovetail off that last question. So what's the best way to address differences of opinion on the board, or between the board members and the administration, or with the Borough Assembly? How would you handle that?
Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick. I've sat on the Indian Education Association Board as a historical parliamentarian, the election board for the Ketchikan Indian community. And I would have to say, there hasn't been a board that I sat on that there is differences within other entities. And it's really just to keep your main focus on what your main goal is, and for the specific one, it's the students. So if it's at better benefit to the students, then you're there to advocate for them, but you're also there to be a team player with your board members, so you guys can create a solution together.
I'm Rob Arnold. As Ginger was saying, she's, you know, had the experience to be on a board. I've been on boards, and not everybody agrees. That's just human nature. You want to seek consensus. Everyone wants to, you know, not confront the issues, but I feel like the issues need to come out. They need to be spoken about. If you don't agree, that's fine, but tell us why you don't agree. And I could explain why I don't agree. I think that's what the problem is with society, is that we're yelling and shouting at everyone, and we're not, we're not talking to each other. I think that would go a long ways if we, you know, because not everybody agrees with everything. I mean, it's true. I don't agree, you don't agree, we all don't agree. Well, let's, let's agree to disagree. Let's sit down and talk about it. I think if we just talk with cool heads, we present the situation as to our point of view and as to your point of view, then maybe we can have some consensus on something that we're talking about. Maybe not everything, but something.
Melissa O'Brien, one of the roles that I've filled in the community is Program Director for Southeast Alaska Independent Living, and they are an advocacy organization that works with seniors and people with disabilities. And I think it's pretty safe to say that advocacy is not always the easiest thing to do. We've, I have experience in defending things at different grant agencies and different municipalities, but I think the most common misconception is that advocacy doesn't, it doesn't have to be adversarial. We all are allowed to have different opinions, but if we bring it back to the reason that we're all there. So the whole point of the school board and any elected body is representing the community and representing who you're serving. So remembering that, remembering that it's, that we need to listen to all the facts, that we need to not offer judgments. I think that's important. It's very important to be an advocate, but it's also, it doesn't need to be adversarial. And that's kind of my motto. I've had lots of experience personally and professionally advocating and trying to just remain calm and realize that we're all there for, in this case, the school board. We're there for the students, so what's in their best interest?
Okay, so sticking with the minute thirty, answer timeframe. Would you be in favor of dedicating PILT funds to local education, and why?
PILT funds to local education? I would have to do some research on what the PILT funds are for and how they operate, and if they can be used for local education. There's a lot of stuff that goes into these grants, and some of them may work, some of them may not. But if we can get some money from an outside source to run the schools, that would be a possibility. I would have to look more at the grant and, and the legality of it, because a lot of stuff, you have to follow the, the trail of, is this, does this work? If it doesn't work, then you can't make it work, so.
Without being familiar with what that acronym stands for, I'll just say that I'm not sure. And so we would, I, there's a lot to learn about finances and different grants and budgeting, as Mr. Arnold said. So it would be something that I'd have to look into. I think that we also, without knowing what that stands for, we also need to be careful that we don't just take money whenever it's offered to us, because there are reasons sometimes where you might not want to do that. So I'm not familiar with PILT funds, I will say.
If, if it were the only last choice, then the, I'm sure the board would have to look into it and to see the availabilities. But I would, I would say no, because if you're pulling out of another funding source, then you're shortcutting another location. And I think it's just better to build funds in other ways, and whether that means to hire another grant writer, then you can do such. But I don't think we should be pulling from other buckets just because ours isn't full, because at the end of the day, when theirs comes short, then they're going to want to pull out of our funding as well.
I think we're back to starting with you, Melissa. What are your areas of concern regarding student achievement? And if you could make changes, what would that entail?
You know, I think I kind of default to IEPs, because I have a child on an IEP. And we have been very blessed in the community to have the teachers and the staff that we do. When I worked for sale, one of the things that we did at the end of my career there was work with the staff at K-HI to do transitional plan for summer work programs. So students with disabilities transitioning into the workforce, and that is something that I feel like we really need to strengthen in our community, is our students with disabilities and our other students that maybe don't fall into the college path. Making sure that every student finds their groove, figures out what it looks like, whether it's employment, whether it's VOTEC, whatever it may be. But that's one thing that I think we could strengthen, is, is employment opportunities, working towards a path that doesn't include the traditional college path. And that's one thing that's important to me.
Ginger Yeal-Atu-McCormick. I think that there's multiple things that we could do to provide successful students, and that would be to check in on their mental health and to make sure that they're okay in that realm. I do think that IEPs is an amazing resource, however, not every kid fits that qualification. And then those are the kids that sometimes get left out. So I think that if we do different learning styles and provide them with other resources as well, expand, break the prison pipeline to reduce dropouts, to be there to, for different learning styles, and really just providing the educators with the tools and resources that they need to be successful in their teaching styles is really, but it's going to be there to help out students. I know a lot of students aren't necessarily successful through their styles, whether they're in transitioning homes, a split home, foster cares. We need to be able to reach every student in their needs and to be able to provide them with the resources they need to succeed. And being able to have good transitioning between elementary school and elementary school to middle school, and middle school to high school, and whether we get them ready for a job, or trade school, or community college, or university.
Hi, this is Rob Arnold. I think one of the things that we need to do is, like I said, raise the test scores. Our students are not able to connect if they don't have a good enough test scores to get into good colleges or just to have a good solid base as far as their diploma goes. The other thing that I would work on is having better security at our schools. I think that we should have monthly drills, security drills, to keep our school safe. That would help the students have peace of mind and calm attitudes. I think that another big problem we have is that 10% of our student body has unexcused absences every day. So if 10% of our student body is not showing up to school, that's a problem, and then the teachers are expected to... And then the teachers are expected to catch them up. That's hard on our teachers to catch up kids that are way, way behind. I know that we've just came out of COVID and, you know, you could miss a bunch of school and still keep going. You know, you go to the next level, but you haven't really attained the level of grade that you go, are in. And then you go to the next level and you're completely lost. So I think that we have kids, some of them, that are completely lost in school and they don't have a solid skill set as far as reading, writing, and arithmetic. Let's find out why those kids are absent. And then let's have some kind of parameters in the policies that there's some kind of a penalty or something that would keep our kids in school. The graduates are, graduate rates are dropping. And, you know, we have a lot of problems with drugs coming into the school. So I would definitely work on that and the security plan. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with Ginger again. And the question is, if you, by the way, I wanted to mention for those that are listening and watching and that are here, these are questions that are submitted by members of the community. It's just not Michelle O'Brien sitting in the chamber office dreaming this stuff up. So if you could vote right now on the Prop Two issue in the Borough election, how would you vote and why?
I'd vote no. And I believe it's, as Clincket and Hyde, as we're very vocal, traditional people, but in today, we're, have the ability to go in there and be able to see our history written down. And it's really important, whether even in nonfictional and fictional, that our youth and adults have somewhere a nice space that they can go in there and find educational resources. Not everybody has internet or Wi-Fi or access to these important materials. And really, you can take everything from someone, every single materialistic thing from them, but you can never take what they know. So I think the library is an important source for this community and the events that they host are very important to our youth as well.
This is Rob Arnold. It's a breathtaking situation. You know, I'm a lifelong learner. I take college courses. My last college course is I just took Intro to Native Studies and I also took a 200-level writing class. And I've always used the libraries, you know? So I don't think, I am for the libraries, although I have one caveat. I think one of my things is let's keep politics out of the schools. There's too many politics in the schools around the nation. I'm not talking about Ketchikan particularly. But we see with this library issue, we see the politics and what happens. Part of our community now wants to, you know, defund the library basically because they've allowed something in that not everybody agrees with. I think it's inappropriate that kids are taught or learning that. And so I'm against politics being in the classroom. I'm not running for the Assembly or the City Council. I'm running for the school board, but I would be against politics in the classroom.
Melissa O'Brien. I would also, I would vote no on Prop Two. I think that there are several reasons. One of them, the library is for everybody. Our Borough residents use it just as much. I also think it's important to note that representation and inclusion matter. And the reason that this was brought up, I believe, is important to address as well. So I will say that I am a supporter of the library and all of their programs that they offer, and I would vote no on that.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just scoot over here so I can see the clock. And it looks like we do have some additional time. And we'll allow, I would say, two minutes for this. But are there any members of the audience that would like to ask a question? All righty, seeing none. I see lots of looks out there like, hmm, you might get some emails later, candidates. Okay, I think we start down here. No, we start down here this time. Okay, tell us about, tell folks about what school district or community activities or organizations that you've been involved in here in Ketchikan.
Well, I came to Ketchikan in the year 2000, you know, the year 2000. That was a long time ago. But I did some shows with the First City Players. I was in a couple of their productions. I was also helped marine on the, or the, excuse me, the KRBD, the radio. So I was a DJ for a couple of the programs. I also do the Iwana program at our church. And it's for kids. And I'm also, I've volunteered with the Iwanas also in Kodiak. I lived in Kodiak for a stint, but as far as, and also I'm involved in our local union here. I'm a chief purser on the Alaska Marine Highway System, so I'm very, I was involved in our union. So those are some of the things that I have been involved with. I am a volunteer. I think that each of us as community members should be volunteering. It's our community. Our kids are our future. There's a saying that goes, leave it better than when you found it. And that's something I try to do with the community. I try to volunteer. I try to help out. And that's my focus is getting our kids, you know, so that when we leave, they're in a good place. So, thank you.
The question is, local. In what school district or community activities or organizations have you been involved? Okay, thank you. School district, you know, I actually was a district employee for several years. I was, I worked as a para-professional in special education and in response to intervention. And so I loved that. And while I was there, I actually worked at the school that I went to. I was a first-year student at Point Higgins. Yay. We started the Lego Robotics Club. So that was something that was really important and that's still going in other schools, which is amazing. I was a Cub Scout leader for several years for my older boys and loved that until they decided they didn't want to be Cub Scouts anymore. I don't know why they didn't want to be Eagle Scouts, but anyway, I have, I am also a volunteer. I try to donate my time in any way I can in the community. I have children that sit on different, in different activities and try to join whenever I can in different ways, so.
Ginger Yeats-Lautewu McCormick. Excuse me, isn't in my culture, it's disrespectful, but to not be humble. So I served as the Historical Parliamentarian for the Native Indian Education Association down in Oregon. I as well volunteered for Clincket Kids and Foster Care for Craft Night and taught them how to make regalia. I also hosted salmon homecoming, which is a big celebration for the salmon to come home. And we taught people the lifespans of salmon and what happens to them and how important they are to our ecosystem. I was a Traditional Ecological Knowledge Director for the Indigenous Nation Studies at Portland State University. I also was a founder of Alaska Native Sisterhood Camp 49 down in Portland. And I'm current member of the Alaska Native Sisterhood or Brotherhood Camp 14 here in Ketchikan. I volunteered a lot for hosting Indigenous Peoples' Day and as well as Elizabeth Pradovitch I also am a tutor for MESSA, which is Mathematical Engineering Science Achievements. So, and I also help with anybody within here, the Southeast and as well the West Coast, help them apply for FASPA or help them apply for college or higher education. I just helped someone last year get into trade school. So that's what I do within the education system. It's going to change.
Yes, he wants to tell us more. Feel free to meet with him after the meeting. Okay, so for many years, there has been a health, healthcare insurance pool shortfall in the district that it doesn't seem to be getting solved. How would you plan or have you thought about how you might address the healthcare insurance pool shortfall? Who was first last time? Okay, so we're back to you, Melissa.
That was something that, you know, I worked for the district. Gosh, I think it was, I think I was done nine years ago and it was an issue then. You know, we had para-professionals in the district that didn't get a paycheck because they had to pay their health insurance through the summer. That's, that's not okay to not get a paycheck for April and May because you have to pay your health insurance when people are living in this community. So I think we just, we need to continue working at it. It's something that is a struggle when we were advocating for the teachers. My, my big concern, and I love our teachers, I love what they do, but what about the para-professionals? When we're talking about the teaching staff and their insurance, we need to also take into account our support staff in the schools. So I don't have any ideas, but I think that it's something that we definitely need to look into and address and figure out a more competitive pool and figure it out.
Ginger Yeats-Lautewu McCormick. I believe to keep retention in educators and school district employees present, especially during our off-seasons, whether they find another job within the school district to keep them employed. But I, I do believe that probably the school district, not probably, I believe that they should be covered in healthcare year-round.
This is Rob Arnold. You know, I've negotiated contracts and that seems to be what it all boils down to, our wages and healthcare. And that's what we fight back and forth for. Or, you know, on the other side, you know, I feel that, you know, no one wants to pay more. I mean, we all want to get, get more for less. I think that sometimes you might have to pay more. Everything's going up, inflation's going up, you know, the wages are pretty competitive. I would say that there's probably room for negotiation on wages, but as far as healthcare goes, I mean, the cost of healthcare is spiking. The benefit package is very good for a teacher or a para. I got a pretty good benefit package with the state. A lot of people don't get the kind of benefits that the schools do. So from the public's point of view, they probably say, oh, man, those guys are overpaid and they got too good of insurance. Why we don't have any insurance at all? So I think it's that you got to really walk eggshells and find out where you can make some cuts or maybe charge more.
And tell us something that differentiates you from the other candidates.
Ginger Yeats-Lautewu McCormick. I think that the co-candidates as well as the school board are a set of amazing group of individuals. And I believe that we're all here for the same reason. I just think that if what separates me is my determination to make sure that students of all the communities succeed and my unwillingness to give up. But I also love alternative routes. So if we're not, if we all have the same goal and we can't agree on it, then I'm determined that we'll take another route. It might not be the route both of us wanted to go, but I'm really good at making new routes so we can all end up at the same goal that we were trying to achieve in the first
What difference, this is Rob Arnold. What differentiates me from the other candidates? You know, I've heard some good things. It's given me inspiration today. But I would say, I would say that as far as the experience goes, I've been on boards. I'm a researcher. I know where to go to get information. I think that I have a set of standards. People may not like some of the things that I stand for, but I stand for them. I'm not afraid to back down. I'm a charger. I can, I can get things done. Task me with something and I'll do it. I am a servant of the state. I, you know, I've worked on the ferry since 2006 as a, you know, as different roles. Now I'm a chief purser. So I feel like I want to give back to the state of Alaska and to the students. Like I said, there are bright and shining stars that we need to support and that we need to do everything we can to get them to the next level. Sometimes people just need a little boot sometimes, but we can do it together as a community. And I think that we can do it starting tomorrow.
I was going to say that I play a really good air guitar, but after your answers, I don't know. So, you know, I think one of the things that, and I imagine as I got to know them a little better, it would be the same, but humor and positivity is something that's really important in any situation. I believe in advocating. I'm, I was an advocate professionally. I do it personally. I'm on parent boards. I'm an advocate with the Epilepsy Foundation for a Legislature. I believe knowledge is power and I want to empower parents within our district and our, our staff to do the best that they can for our students. It doesn't just start with our students. It's really coming from the top down. So I think for me, humor and positivity is something that is really good and I also play a very good air guitar.
Sure. No, I need, you need to use the mic and come up here. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to know your views on social emotional learning and how it impacts students.
Social emotional learning, I think I'm not exactly too familiar with it, but what I can say is that with what's happened to our kids, I have a daughter in school. I took her out of school last year because she homeschooled for the whole year. Homeschooling doesn't work for everyone. That's why I think we need to support our public schools. There's a lot of, you know, when you stick a kid in a room and alienate them and make them look at a computer all day, that's not good. I think kids need interactive teaching. They need to be socially act within their peer group and they also need the, they need to be, they need to be given positive admonishment because some of the houses that they come from, they don't get that. And I think as, as, as teachers and administrators and school board people, we need to support our kids and give them that encouragement. I think we all need encouragement, but kids, I think at this time, they need that encouragement. And I hope that I answered your question. I don't know if, if I did, but that's what I think of that.
I'm a big proponent, this is Melissa O'Brien. I'm a big proponent of play-based learning. I think it's important that kids, reading, writing, arithmetic are amazing, but we also need to realize that, you know, when you break down a school day, how much of it is social emotional? How much of it is them learning how to interact with their peers? How much of it is learning appropriate transitional skills, those kind of things? So I think as a district, we have an obligation also to figure out where we're moving in society. There's a, there's a huge push for trauma-informed care. We need, we need staff that understands how trauma plays into children's emotional well-being as well as their educational needs. That's a huge thing. If we can't figure out how a student learns because of something that's, a need that's being unmet socially and emotionally, they're not going to learn anything else. So I think it's a very, very important thing to consider.
Can you repeat the question? How do you feel about social emotional learning?
This is Ginger Yeats-Lautewu McCormick. I think that in order for kids to retain and keep information, that they have to be in nice, healthy spaces with healthy communication and very inclusive as well. And I think that whether the teachers give gentle reminders to their peers on how to be nicer, I know we have an anti-bullying within the school district, but I think it could go a step further to be more inclusive and to, to break certain groups up so they can feel more comfortable with someone that they wouldn't normally socialize with would be nice. And I really strive for healthy spaces, even in workspaces. Healthy spaces, healthy communication is really what's going to help keep our kids thriving.
So for the past couple of years, I've always enjoyed asking a question because whether you like it or not, we do live in a small town and people know a lot about people, but they don't know everything. So over the years, I always like to ask, what is something unusual about you that people may not know? Now, to give you an example, some people have told little stories where, you know, I bet you didn't know I used to be in the Peace Corps. Or I did, bet you didn't know that I'm an avid skydiver or something along those lines. What's something interesting and unique about you on a personal level that people might not know?
I already answered this one. I'm just kidding. Now you got, I could do my air guitar solo, but I won't. I guess I would go a little bit more serious and just think, you know, I hold myself to a really high level of accountability. And it's something that came from my Revilla days. So I came from, you know, a decent family home, but I moved out when I was younger and I worked full-time. And so school was something that was, I think, for a lot, the same with a lot of our children now, that it's, they work full-time. Home is a little bit different than maybe Home is a little bit different than maybe their school setting. So I had moved out and I was going to school and working full-time, and this was back when Revilla, I don't know if they still do, but they had, they had night school as well. And I worked at Kenny's Shoe Store in the mall. If you guys all knew, the mall closed at eight o'clock. So I had a kind of a tough time getting to school sometimes. And we had a principal there, and I still remember his name to this day. His name was Charlie Jones. And I was on my last unexcused absence. We talk about unexcused absences and meeting a kid where we're at. And he called me at the shoe store. The phone rings, and it's five minutes to eight. And he says, I know the mall closes at eight o'clock, and you have one more absence left before you are done and you're expelled. I'm going to stay here until 10 minutes after eight. And if you show up, I'm going to mark it as an excused absence, and you can start over again. And I showed up. I got up there, and I gave him every excuse in the book. And he said, is that a reason, or is that an excuse? And I thought to myself, and I still to this day ask myself that question, is this a reason, or is it an excuse? So he was the person that wrote me a letter of reference for college, like he was the person that turned it around. And I think that's something that I still to this day, I hold myself to a high level of accountability, because we all have the same amount of time in our day, and what we do with it is up to us. So is it a reason, or is it an excuse? So trying to be more professional than air guitar.
Ginger Yeal, Dr. Wu McCormick. I'm just going to spin off of the example that Melissa O'Brien just gave. And I think as educators, we need to remember, and myself as well, you know, I mentor a lot of the youth within my community. We need to remember that we can't tell people that they can't. And one of the things that I've strived for since being a dropout was a principal told me that you can't do it. So even though I had a 4.0 GPA and lettered in high school, he said, you cannot do it. So I turned around, and one of the things that I did while attaining my associate's degree in community college was that I was a NASA intern. And the engineer at NASA looked at me, and he goes, you're one of those people that's told you can't do it, and you do it just to show them that you can do it. And I think that's what I strive for every day, is a lot of people say that those kids are going to be statistically dropping out, or those kids are not going to be able to attain that information. And it's not just for myself. It's for not just this generation, but it's for the entire future generations coming, and including myself, is that we can say that they're not going to do it, but you watch to see how fight, hard these kids are going to fight to be able to achieve their dreams and their goals. And as educators and school board members, when people tell us that our kids are not going to do it, when they tell us that our kids are going to continue to drop out, we're going to sit there and fight for them and advocate to them to show that they can and that they will.
This is Rob Arnold. I have a kind of a funny little story. I went to New York and studied acting for a couple of years. And afterwards, I thought, I'm going to break into business, I'm going to be this great actor. You know, everybody thinks that, right? So I was working at a studio in North Carolina, in Wilmington, called Carico Studios. I don't think it's around anymore. And I was doing extra work, and I was working, you know, the food truck for the Stars and stuff. At least I was, you know, by the place. So anyway, I needed another job, so I went, I saw an ad in the paper for a DJ at a radio station. And I thought, oh, cool, I'll be a, I'll be a DJ. So I called the guy, and he says, yeah, come on down, we want you, we need you. And I said, all right. So I went down there. It was an urban contemporary radio station. I didn't know what urban contemporary was. And so I walked in, and it's like, you know, everyone was the other color than I was. And they were all sending around going, hey, you want a job? And I just looked at everybody and went, yeah. Because I'd just come from New York, and I worked at a restaurant called Sheila's. And it was, you know, the same way. So I felt like, wow, you know, I can go into a place and this guy just accepts me, and I'm not, you know. And so he says, hey, I got a deal for you. He says, you're going to be doing this night gig, you know, you're going to be doing overnights on weekends and days. And I was just like, what, overnights? And he's like, yeah, you'll be able to do your job during the day. You can come here, and you can, you know, play the music. And so I get all these people calling me at night, you know, men, women, young kids, all this, and they thought, man, who's that? They thought, you know. And so we would have these interesting conversations, and I was able to relate and talk to people. And they thought, you know, I was an urban contemporary guy. And I, you know, I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, thank you so very much, everyone, for coming. And thank you, candidates, again, for your willingness to serve. This will be the first of three forums. There will be no forums next week, because there are going to be forums at Southeast Conference. If you are a Chamber member, you can go to the Southeast Conference website, and they do have a very limited number of entry tickets to the three forums that they will be having, the senatorial, congressional, and gubernatorial forums. That's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't give a little Chamber commercial here. Don't forget, we're going to be having a Welcome to Ketchikan soiree out at Salmon Falls. That's Monday evening. I know that's not a typical day for an event, but we're welcoming everyone to Southeast Conference. Salmon Falls is very excited. They're going to really lay out a great spread, and it should be a beautiful evening. You can sign up for those tickets. They're $20 at ketchikanchamber.com. So that'll do it for today. Again, thanks to our friends at KPU TV and our friends on KTKN, and we hope to see you at the next few forums. Appreciate it.